Let's call this meeting over if we could, please. Today, the first order of business will be the minutes from the May 7th meeting. This was mailed to the magistrates. Corrections retained to the minutes. We pay the motion, go through. Motion from Eric, second by Keith. Further discussion? All approve, say aye. Disapprove? Motion will carry. Next will be your bills list, additional bills list, and transfers. There are quite a few transfers. Those are line item transfers within the budget. Towards the end of the year, we usually tell we have a few more of those. As we get closer, we have about six weeks left in our fiscal year.
I noticed Brad, or John, we had a couple wrecks. We've got a couple tow bills on here.
Well, not really wrecks, just wrecking down on the road.
I see one of them said it was insurance company.
Yeah, that was truck four. And we had basically a fire under the hood. We got towed to a place in Louisville. But that's the insurance company, we'll get reworked today.
Oh, okay. That's why I thought it was a wreck.
That fire happened a while ago, right?
It happened a while ago.
He's not taking it forward to get fixed.
Well, it should have been there for a while. We're talking about the bills. It's been up there for a couple of months. They had to do that. We didn't get a phrase on it. It's been a drawn out process.
Yes. Not every day do they deal with a fire or an insurance disaster and deal with a fire on a garbage truck.
Yes.
Good thing they didn't catch it back on that.
We were very lucky. It was actually in the lead too. We were very lucky that it happened about seven in the morning and the mechanics had to be walking out and saw it. But if it happened at midnight, all our trucks were in the lead too.
Is that one that runs over in my district?
That's all that left. Is that it? Because it's loud.
Motion in order?
Take a motion, pay the bills and transfers as presented.
Thank you Bernard, sir. Second to that.
A second.
Second by Jeff. Further discussion? All approve, say aye. Disapprove? Motion will carry. Okay, first order of regular business would be a public hearing regarding the proposed use of county road aid and local government economic assistance funds. This money is to be dedicated for the use on county roads. Opened up for public comment. I received no written comment by any of the citizens of the county. For those in the audience, this is a pot of money from the tax off of the minerals tax, the rock that is hauling the county. The county gets a portion as well as the state. And coal, not severance money, but coal haul, hauling money. We have certain roads in the county are designated like Highway 150, 31 are coal roads in Nelson County. We get a little small change out of that as well. No, by having comment on how they want to spend that money as far as the county roads, we generally buy blacktop patching. Is that right?
Just rock.
Just rock, coal mix. Yeah, rock and coal mix. That being said, we'll close the public hearing and move on to the next order of business, which means we have a guest with us today. I'm going to call on Courtney Newton with School District. Thomas Nelson, the lead.
So we have our guest speaker today. This is Josie Hamilton, and she's going to be presenting about her NTI coursework. So this year, all of our students on non-traditional instruction days, which are the snow days that are actual instruction days, did a course about how we can support our growing community in Nelson County. So our top presenter is Josie Hamilton, so she's going to talk to you guys a little bit more about her ideas and ways that we can support our growing county.
We may get her to come up here, but...
We hope so, yeah.
She's got a little backdrop.
So I'm a little nervous. Sorry.
Don't be, please.
Hello, everyone. My name is Josie Hamilton, and I'm a senior at Thomas Nelson High School. I just wanted to go ahead and start this presentation out today about thanking all the administrators and staff at Thomas Nelson for giving me the opportunity to be here today and sharing my idea. So what I'm going to be talking about today is how we must support our growing community by providing an indoor aquatics center.
Please, we have your flag.
I'm on the second page now. So a little background information about myself is I've been on the Thomas Nelson swim team for the past 30 years now. And pictured in the first picture right here is me with my coach Carmen and swim teammates after meddling in the 400 relay. And pictured here are Nelson County swimmers. So as many people may not know, both the Thomas Nelson and Nelson County team both practice together. So although we are two schools, we like to refer to ourselves as one team. And because we are so small, this does set us at a disadvantage whenever it comes to meet times. But this doesn't stop us from pushing to our very best potential. So to the next page. So we currently all practice at the Luddon Aquatics Center. And Luddon is about a 40-minute drive from Nelson County. So in total, we are on the bus for about an hour and 20 minutes just to go to practice every single day. So I leave Thomas Nelson at about 3:30, and I don't get home at some nights until 7:30 or even late nights at 8:00. So it's a pretty long drive, and it takes a lot of time. So whenever it comes to recruiting new members, when they often hear about the time management skills you have to have and the time that it takes, it tends to push people away. So this can be a disadvantage for all of us. And just this year, Barstown has organized a swim team, making Nelson County have a total of four swim teams in the district. Nelson County, Bethel, Thomas Nelson, and Barstown. And because all of us are trying to practice at the Luddon Aquatics Center all at the same time, they don't have enough room for us. So this limits us to only about three days a week of practice. So this can also set us at a disadvantage whenever it comes to competing against people that are able to practice throughout the whole week at whatever times they want and whenever they want. So I think an aquatic center for us would just be a way for all of the schools to benefit from, not just Nelson County or Thomas Nelson. It'll be a way for all of us to come and unify together and be able to build relationships within the community. So to the next page. So now for the fun part is the entertainment possibilities that come along with an aquatic center. So although we do have outdoor pools spread across Nelson County, they close whenever summer is over. So having an aquatic center will be an entertainment center throughout the whole year. And really, it'll just be entertainment for everyone. So Barstown is kind of, the entertainment is kind of oriented around the bourbon industry. So there's not much for people to do under the ages of 21 and over the ages of, say, 50 and 60. So this will be a way for kind of everyone to get together and have something to do that also influences wellness and a healthy lifestyle and healthy entertainment within the community. So what we can have at the aquatic center is aqua aerobic classes and exercise classes. And this will be a way for kind of the older generation to influence a healthy lifestyle at an older age. And we can have swim lessons and lifeguard training. So this will be a way for the kids to have fun, but while also they're having fun, they're going to be learning about the safety of swimming and implementing that within the community. So some party packages that can come along with the aquatic center are family swim nights, birthday parties, reunions, corporate team bonding times. So just really, this will be a place for just any club, team, and group to meet, ranging from older to younger, it really doesn't matter. It'll just be a place for families to come together and also just a place to implement wellness throughout the community and healthy entertainment. So to the next page. The workforce development output. So whenever we look at the aquatic center as a basic service, this brings more opportunities for jobs. So when we have exercise classes and swim lessons, this puts an urgency on lifeguards, and people who can fulfill these positions are teenagers. So sadly, the composite of all minimum wage jobs within Barstown are kind of found in fast food and corporations. So this will be a way for students to kind of branch out and find something new to do while also implementing safety within the community. And currently, I'm a lifeguard at the New Haven City Pool, so I know that if these positions were needed to be filled, they would be filled very quickly. And also, another workforce development output that we can have within the aquatic center is making the center also an aquatic therapy and rehabilitation center. So pictured on the bottom right, you see right here, this is an aquatic therapy pool. And although they do have these spread throughout Kentucky, they're found in a very limited number. So having one in Barstown will be able to attract a lot of people, but it will also be able to attract organizations such as Court, the Rehabilitation Center. So Court can also use this resource, but also massage therapists will be able to use our resources, and even athletic trainers. So this will be a great way to bring jobs into the county. Okay, to the next page. Okay, so whenever new employees are finding jobs, they're often faced with the question of where are they going to live? And luckily for us, Barstown sits between two major cities, Lexington and Louisville, about an hour drive to both of them. So it kind of places Barstown in the perfect place for people to live. So whenever we are attracting people into our community, they're going to be buying their groceries here, they're going to be paying their taxes here, and they're going to be sending their children to our schools. So entertainment plays a really big influence on where people want to send their kids and where people want to live, really. So this graph just goes to show how placing an aquatic center into a community will increase the population tremendously. So this was an aquatic facility study based in the city of Dallas, and it projected the city of Dallas to increase by around a total of about 200,000 people in a year. So this graph just goes to show how if we were to place an aquatic center into Barstown, it would increase the population tremendously. And although this would put an urgency on housing, it would also be beneficial because we would kind of be transcending from this small town into a bigger and wider community while also bringing money into our economy. So to the last page. Okay, so when looking at the finances of an aquatic center on a larger frame, swim meets and other events will fuel a rise in revenues. So whenever people start to look at the aquatic center as kind of like a community center and a therapy center and a rehabilitation center, more use is gained out of it rather than just looking at it as an indoor swimming pool or just a swimming pool. So whenever more use is gained out of it, increased use results and increased revenues. And what we can do with this increase in revenues is kind of help to diminish the financial burden that the aquatic center may cost us while also enriching our community with new members. So that's all I have for everyone today. I just wanted to thank you all for listening to me. And not only am I passionate about this project for the benefit of all the swim teams, but really for the benefit of the community. I think this would be like the step into the right direction and also the step into a better future for the community.
Great feedback. We have a community award to be presented today to Josie Hamilton by the Nelson Fiscal Court. And I can turn that way to get a, do a great job.
Thank you.
Kim, I think we got a job for her here near here.
I think you do.
As a salesy, as a sales lady. Good presenter. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was a good compact.
Yeah, good presentation.
Good presentation, Josie. You could tell she did.
She did good.
Okay, next order of business, we have a couple of proclamations. First, you have your mail, proclamation concerning Central Kentucky Community Action. We have a couple of representatives back here in the room. If you remember about a couple of months ago, maybe a month and a half ago, how good came a presentation you guys on the services that are provided there. And I'm not going to read the whole proclamation, but basically I'll go and state this today. Now therefore, I, Dean Watts, Nelson County Judge, Executive, do hereby proclaim May 21 today as Community Action Day in recognition of the hard work and dedication of all Kentucky Community Action Agencies. And we'll put this in a matter of record for you folks. Thank you so much for all you do. You hear a lot, you see a lot, and you do a lot. Okay, the other proclamation I have today, and this is actually for Friday, actually, the proclamation in regards to Sister Pat Hill. Anybody that knows Sister Pat, she has been the leader and founder of the Montessori school. Whereas Sister Pat Hill has announced her retirement Montessori. Whereas Sister Pat founded the school in 1973 and has taught for all 46 years. And whereas Sister Pat has made such a positive impact for the students through the years, and Nelson County has greatly benefited because of her dedication. And now therefore, I, Dean Watts, Nelson County Judge, Executive, do hereby proclaim May 24 to be Sister Pat Day in Nelson County. Encourage the people of Nelson County to recognize Sister Pat Hill for her contributions to this community. And I understand she's been a little under the weather.
She's been hot.
She's been hot. Is she doing okay, though?
I think so.
Okay.
She's 87.
Eighty-seven. Eighty-seven. But we'll put this in matter of record. If you want a copy of it, I'll get you a copy up here in just a minute. Are you ready to go? I can send somebody to get it. Brad, will you want to get a copy of that, please? In color.
Thank you.
Ms. Z, she's got something to do today, I'm sure.
Oh, retired.
I knew that. Okay, let's go to the next order of business. Want to talk a little bit more about this energy assessment district up on the agenda? You guys had a chance to review that, if any questions? Any appetite in court?
We're talking about the PACE thing.
Yeah.
It is not exclusive, correct?
It's open to everybody.
I've had some real, real warning bells go off in my district over that.
Okay.
And, you know.
I might hear it.
The tax assessment is scaring the dickens out of a lot of folks over there. They said, you know.
But that doesn't have anything to do with this.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, rest assured. What Eric's referring to right now about a third of the county got reassessed on their property values.
Well, it was, they were concerned about when PACE does that, that they were going to...
I've got calls too, but you know, it's like, I think what he's trying to say is that whenever somebody hears a taxing district.
That's what I'm talking about. I'm telling you, standing on our heels over in my district, I'm just calling.
Red flag goes up.
And I reviewed it. I can't see a downside to it.
I tried to find one.
Well, yeah, I looked pretty hard myself because...
We know you.
The radar kind of goes up when...
We know you.
Whenever you hear a taxing, special taxing district.
Yeah, but this has nothing to do with taxing.
Yeah, but it's just the way that it is. So you know, it's been described to us as a taxing district.
Yeah, I didn't take it that way, just in this presentation the other day for some reason. I took it as a open, basically, open the county up for energy efficiencies in the construction and reconstruction of properties to improve energy efficiency.
I mean, I didn't read it, but it's just the county concern. I don't have any problem with it.
I prefer to research a little bit more.
No problem with that. We'll bring it back to the next court meeting. Can you, a couple of weeks, can you get it in that time?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Well, let you guys know something. I talked to my banker, I sat down with him for an hour. And anything that's got to do with financing comes down through the banking when they go to these seminars like we go to, there's nothing to mention of. He couldn't find anything on it.
That's interesting. Who's your banker?
I'd rather not say.
Okay.
He's legal.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that you were...
I'm going to take a vote. Does somebody think the judge just hit me or not?
No, it was right away.
I guess I deserve it. I prefer to research it just a little bit more. I've had some serious hair raising going on in my district about it before I made a decision.
Okay, let me just say this. Yes, what happens, I believe the guy described it the last meeting he made a presentation, there's only, I think Covington, maybe Lexington have passed these as far as counties go in Kentucky? Very, very few counties have done that. I don't even know if Jefferson County's done it yet. I'm sure they have.
I don't think Jefferson has.
I'll research that and find out.
The way I understand it, there's no taxes passed on to the citizens. It's just for financing.
There's nothing mentioned about taxes. It's all about the financing.
Right.
And the financing of the projects, which means that somebody, say if they've got an X number of dollar a building, they've got 80% financed and then need another 20%. And so the banks evidently, I don't know that side of the story, evidently get some credit of some sort with the federal government because of the, of the way that the other 20% is financed, seven and a half percent, I think he said, what the average rate is on the secondary market.
Seven and a half. Seventeen. It just don't sound like to me it's a good a deal to start with.
But if you can't get it, sometimes seven and a half in business is not a bad rate.
And this, what he also discussed about is that doesn't show on your credit either. Like, you know, you know what I mean? That is a little bit questionable to me, that you could have debt and it not be considered.
I think the reason that is, is because it transferred with the property and it has a tax. But I agree with you, it is a tax.
It seemed a little bit suspicious. I'd kind of like to review it.
All this funny finance stuff always concerns me.
It does me too.
Remember that was a big company by the name of AIG that somebody told me one time they could never fail? They did.
They did.
And that's, and when I, they told me that 20 years ago, and then about eight or twelve years, 14 years ago, that it did fall because they were so big and got all these funny financing deals.
Yeah, but I think a lot of these lending institutions will be from out of town. I don't really think it's going to affect anybody in our community very much that doesn't want to do it.
Well, they don't have to.
If you don't participate, it don't affect you.
Most of our banks are a little more conservative now since the 2008, 9, 10 era. But we'll bring you back to look at it.
Yeah.
I just think it's opening the door. I think there's some possibilities, we're opening the door for a couple of projects to be able to be included in a, in a positive way for Nelson County.
I think Kim addressed that in our last meeting. Kim's not here. That would benefit the industries coming in.
Especially this one guy has some, Ohio's done it, he's got that same financing in Ohio.
Well, can Kim find some kind of research to where she thinks this would be an extra tool? Why is she just thinking this, or?
Well, this guy's asked for it.
Yeah, but I mean, does she have any study to back it up? Or?
Well, that guy gives a bunch of assurances on that.
I read that, yeah. Excuse me, I didn't, I couldn't come out with nothing with it.
I don't know if I, I'd like to hear his concerns because I don't, I can't find any. That's an honest question. What kind of concerns would you have?
What kind of concerns do I have about it?
Yeah.
It's just that my banker, he didn't feel comfortable about it. Like I said, when you go to these classes, there's nothing mentioned about PACE. Actually, I heard about this about four or five years ago, briefly, at a judge's conference.
Well, if it was such a good a deal, wasn't it bloomed then four or five years ago?
Don't know.
And why does the government need to be involved?
We're not involved.
Well, we're, we're have to pass it. The fiscal court has to pass it.
In order to allow it to happen within your county. That's a lot, a lot of things we have to do.
I'm like Eric, I need to be schooled a little bit more.
I'm no problem with that. Go on to the landfill solid waste report.
We had our tire amnesty event last weekend. Pretty good turnout, but total loads hauled off was 19 loads. We had nine and a half loads that we hauled off from our bulk yard to pick up, and then another nine and a half hauled off from the landfill. So it was a pretty good turnout.
Roughly how many tires was that, John?
Roughly, it's about, we picked up 8,000, around 16,000 tires.
Wow.
Which was a good turnout. So if we had to pay like every other year, it would cost us $18,000 to haul what was just at the landfill. So total, is it, we would have done about 36,000?
I think...
36,000.
Well, that's what I was going to make a point, is we run our own bulk, our tire amnesty every year.
Every year.
So think if we didn't do that. That's what you find in other counties that don't have what we do every year for bulk yard. They get inundated, like hundreds of thousands of tires. Hardin County is one. Jefferson County, of course, is one.
I saw a guy I knew who come down through Main Street there one, on a Friday morning during that tire amnesty, a dump truck load and a trailer load of, I'm talking about a trailer, like a hay wagon kind of thing with siding on it, completely full.
I was out there. Four tractor trailers, please.
Hardin County plates?
No. I knew this guy. I knew this guy.
See, I was out there and seen four tractor trailer loads unloaded.
Yeah.
Tractor trailer load.
Thank you for doing that. There's a lot of people in my district that very much benefited from it, and I think from everybody's district, to keep them out of creeks, out of the hills and hollers and backyards and mosquitoes. I swear. Just don't understand that. Keeping tires.
A lot of them on the farm, but you used to use it to cover the plastic over.
Yeah.
Those twigs out.
Siles, they still get it for silvers. Cover the silvers.
Not many people do it anymore.
Yeah.
Maybe they'll get cleaned up one day.
But someday, yes.
Road Department report. Where's Lee?
Oh, there he is. They ruled you out then. You still ran the fair system. Still the road was just different.
He can get out quicker there.
We replaced a culvert on Haven Ridge Drive. That was one of our bigger projects that we had scheduled.
District one.
District one. Pipe was about 15 foot deep on the outlet side, so we had to rent a larger excavator to be able to tackle that job. The road currently has dense grade on it over the excavation site. We're going to let that settle for a little bit, and then we'll go out there and patch it in the summer when we're doing our asphalt patching. While we had the track over in it, we replaced another pipe on Stoner Road. That was another one that was fairly deep, and that track was just came in handy to get that job taken care of in a day's time. So we do have all the pipes on Stoner Road replaced. It's ready for overlay. We're currently on Nelsonville Loop replacing some culverts to get it ready for overlay as well. We're trying to stay ahead of Mago as much as possible. Mago has already started paving. They've overlaid Hilton Lane in Gary's District and their...
That's a very old, by the way, here.
Lasley Run and Cook Road, they finished it, and they're starting on Sullivan Lane today, Jefferson District. Our road crew grave and rocking some of our gravel roads right now before we start chip sealing and patching asphalt. We repaired Tarrell Lane and mod Cooksey Lane and touched up a little bit on Cornish Lane. We're currently on the Bambierin Road trying to get it back into shape. I don't know if Eric's been over there recently.
Basically, this is Spencer County, I'm looking.
Pretty close, yeah.
Our mom crew, they finished District four and District five for first round. We're currently in District two. We should be starting District one by Thursday if all goes well.
Well, I want to thank you all. We worked. We need you. I know that Haven Ridge was a... I went up there and I was a nervous wreck, so I know, I felt like I was making y'all more nervous too, but it was a different animal. Thank y'all for...
I had it done.
Okay, moving on. Anybody else have anything, real questions? EMA and EMS report, and something that's not on the agenda, but part of the report, it's the lease agreement. You want to talk about that, though?
Yeah, we'll go with the EMA report first. For several months, probably a year or better, we've been looking around the county to develop an official emergency operations center. Emergency Operations Center is not required, but encouraged by the state where folks come together that have the power to plan, prepare, and mitigate any type of disaster or any large scale event that would happen in the county. And in our emergency operation plan, those folks are already named, and we review that annually. And the folks that need to make those decisions are a part of what makes up the Emergency Operations Center. The city bought a few years ago the Mylon Kentucky Homes School Complex and have been converting it into many different uses for different, different folks in the county. And we did a tour of that about a year or so ago, and it came to mind that this building was classified as a civil defense building when it was built. And what better place would it be to maybe move forward with trying to develop an EOC, Emergency Operations Center, within that facility? So back and forth with the city leadership, Mayor Heaton and Greg Ashworth over there, finally came to an agreement. And it had probably what, two or three drafts of that agreement, but basically as a lease, that the city of Barstown will lease us space in the Coveback Building for a dollar a year for a 10-year...
Sort of like we did the... Please, pardon? Did you say a dollar a year? Did you say that?
Dollar a year for a 10-year, 10-year, dollar a year for 10 years, and then renewable after that. And from that point, if, if court agrees and we sign that lease agreement with the city, then I can move forward with trying to file applications for FEMA and state grants to help make this happen. to help make this happen. The first thing, of course, once, once we decide to do that and it all worked out, would be backup, generate backup power for the facility. So we would go for a mitigation grant to make that happen. And this is a long-term situation. It's not going to be something that we would have ready enough going within six months, maybe a year, you know, maybe two years before it was actually a functional emergency operations center. But we would be able to at least be working forward. In the state's eyes, we would be moving, progressing forward. So we would be meeting a lot of those plans.
Joe, I want you to explain to the court what we're, how we currently are using, what we're currently using than, than the shelters that we use.
Yeah, for the, for years since the sheriff's office was built, we had named the sheriff's training room as our makeshift emergency operations center. And we actually did a full-scale training there a few years ago and brought all the folks together in that room and, and dealt with a, a mafia situation. And it worked fairly well, but the sheriff's training center is not set up technologically for an EOC. We need multiple phone drops, computer, internet, all those types of things. Pre-plans would be there, files would, you know, anything that we felt like would help us in dealing with a situation in the future would already be in this facility. It can also be used for other things when you're not, it's not just there for the time when, when, where that disaster occurs. You can use it for training, you know, training classroom type things. So a part of that, if we do with the lease, we have right now just shelters to get folks in and out of the storm. They're, they're not there for them to stay any length of time. We use the civic center. We use the new senior citizens building. And those are just opened up for folks when, when there's the possibility of, of something catastrophic to happen.
Short term, very short term.
Short term, day, one day, two day type thing. What would give us, in talking with Mayor Heaton and Greg Ashworth, if we do the lease on the EOC space, then that will allow us to explore an interlocal agreement or an MOU with the city to be able to use the gym in the facility for a long-term shelter.
Where we could also come in, set up the beds and then the booths. You got the kitchen there and then set out in a good way.
So it's, you know, it's, it's forward thinking. And saying that, and we, we really need to look at New Haven and Bluefield and maybe even Boston and perhaps some of the other cities. But we need, you know, if, if we've got a situation where a storm's coming from the south into the Boston-Douglas area, we need something local, you know, for a shelter. And we really don't have things in writing and agreements done for that. We need to work toward that as well. So this is all encompasses a big circle, but it's, it's about being prepared and pre-planning. I think we're moving forward with that.
You know, for something like that, Joe, would the schools be, would they, would they work with you on something?
You know, it used to be that, that was, that was the, the go-to places for schools, but that is really on back burner now because the, the main goal in a catastrophic event is to get the community back to as much normal as they can get back to. And that's to get schools back open, get kids in schools. And if you've got a big shelter going on.
We had.
Well, if you're in our city school. If you, if you had a big F-5 plowing through Boston, is that, is that some folks that may be living in some mobile housing or something might be able to get into? I mean, is that, is that what you're kind of, like, if, if after they lose their home, then that's kind of?
Of course, if you're watching the weather the last two days out in Oklahoma, Texas, and, and, and all through there, nineteen tornadoes yesterday.
Right.
And some of them were pretty, pretty mean.
Yeah.
And, and folks out in the rural areas do not have a lot of places to go if they're in a, you know, mobile home or whatever it may be. And those, those things are important because we've actually opened a civic center before, the Southern Building, back in the early nineties. The Southern Building was a spot there. You get thirty people in there and it's pretty tight. And so especially people that are in the mobile homes, they come to town.
Oh, sure. I lived in a little more while, make you run.
Yeah.
My goal is to, to keep pushing us to be forward. And a part of that is, is develop shelters and agreements for shelters. We talk about, we all think about tornadoes, weather events. Jeffersonville didn't have a tornado, but they had ten families needed to be placed somewhere when that house blew up and damaged those other houses. So, you know, it can be a small catastrophic event or it can be full-scale F-5 tornado. But we need to be forward-thinking. I think we're moving in that right direction.
I think that's an outstanding idea because there's not a better place in the county than what you're talking about.
That, that building I think was built during the WTA.
It was.
Yeah, I think it's great. You might have heard more about that night.
Well, I went to school there.
I didn't want to say that.
Let me ask you, Joe, let me ask you. So this, this EOC, it'd just be, it'd be comprised of some, just every emergency agency? So you guys?
This emergency agency, if you will have, well, you could have someone representing pastoral care. You would have someone with utilities, public works. You have key players that have to make decisions collectively on recovery, preparation.
Right there on, at, at the unit. We, we had, Joe was referring to what we call tabletop exercise. And we were there about six or eight hours. For me, it says still six or eight hours is pretty, very.
He did well. He did well.
And we had, I was in charge of tallying and that stuff, you know, we were going to do this, we were going to do that, we were going to do this. Called National Guardian, et cetera, et cetera. And, and that was about a year before the ice storm. And what year was that ice storm?
Two thousand and nine.
And, and when you do a tabletop, the state tells you what your event's going to be. It just happened to be an ice storm at that tabletop. Jim, I think you may.
They do injects into it.
And it was good training.
I think it got under control, but no.
There's always something that pops up that is an obstacle. So tires go out.
We'll be doing that again. I'll be calling on the, the folks that are listed in the EOP at somewhere down, down the line, a year or so when we'll, we'll build that event for here and we'll go through that process again. But we, we're behind the eight ball and we need to get to the nine ball.
Joe's Red Cross be coordinating with us?
Red Cross is a, is a team member with us. They're not a lead agency anymore like they used to be, but they are, are a team player and they will, they will do whatever we request and that's what's in their power to do.
How big a building is this, Joe, to get space?
We will have, if you're, I don't know if you're familiar with the, the facility. We're on the third floor. It's two classrooms and then the library is across the front where all the windows are on the third floor. The library will also be used like where the media would come, where our leaders.
We'll put the media in there when we last heard.
Well, that's a part of it.
Brandon, that was a close for you, Julie.
That was basically the typical extra years.
Anybody have any problem with any of that?
No.
Motion to approve the lease agreement with the city. Motion been made by Gary, second by Bernard. All approved, say aye. Disapprove, motion will carry.
Thank you, Joe. I know they take a lot of work.
Oh, we've, we've been talking about this for a year.
I remember him. He, he mentioned it to me.
Also under emergency management. Any other questions on that? Just to let you guys know, we responded to a tractor trailer, tractor trailer accident yesterday at the sixteen mile marker on the Bluegrass. Was indicated that at first that it might be a hazard, which would have been this type of EOC issue. But it turned out it was a farmer that was hauling what they call now syrup or molasses from Boston Distillery to Moorhead. And he left the road to avoid an accident. It was already working. Went to medium overturn, truck called, burned it up. We got up there, sheriff's office already there, fire departments. The tank did not rupture, so we didn't have a spill to deal with. But they did have to wait several hours for offloading truck and pumps to come to remove the product.
Yeah.
So it was shut down off and on both ways for different points in time from about three thirty to, Raymond, are you here?
I'm standing at eight o'clock.
Yeah. So, and that's back and forth with the state coordinating. They will, of course, want to get the Bluegrass openness as quick as possible. State Highway Department of Oakland Lee made that decision not local. So those folks, and I got a call at nine o'clock for the state wanting to know when we're going to open up the eastbound lanes. Been open since about six thirty or seven?
No, I don't think so. I was about at nine thirty last time. The state was still, had it blocked off.
They were rerouting, but eastbound was open. Westbound was closed for a while.
Okay.
But they did open up.
They utilized, Ellis Records utilized the westbound lanes to put the tanker back open.
The east lanes were open. Do you like Jamie on the, on the, Jamie Davis on the weather channel?
Yeah.
Up, being upright those trucks like that? Did you, did you do that kind of stuff?
It's a pretty neat experience to watch.
It is.
Them, and not rupture a tank.
Yeah.
I think they.
You can twist those, those tanks can twist pretty good too.
Did they offload the tank before they set it up?
Yeah, they brought in the tanker out of Moorhead.
It would have been a little easier.
Yeah.
Thank God nobody was killed.
Nobody was hurt, sir.
It was a serious.
Neither were.
He, he loaded traffic. That one car was in the medium, I mean, in the center lane and he loaded, took the bill, turned over.
Wow. This young lady fell asleep, hit a rock wall. Her, and she was a Volkswagen Beetle.
Oh, man.
Hit so hard that the engine came back up, separated from the vehicle and landed on the slow lane of the Bluegrass Park around the eastbound lanes.
Wow.
And then somebody stopped, they go away, hit the engine. The eighteen wheeler pressed the hill and avoided, he took the needle.
And the girl wasn't seriously hurt?
Nobody was seriously hurt.
Thank God.
Although ambulance was called, hour and fifteen minutes after. I was waiting the guy and asked where they are. Okay. That's under EMS, a couple of quick things. Again, we're in the middle of National EMS Appreciation Week. Whoops.
I missed that.
That time. Would encourage the, the public and fiscal court, if you see some of the entities, paramedics, where they work for EMS or fire or whatever, tap them on the back. They, you know, appreciate the job you do. While we're here, Detective Board of EMS has a Inspector Liaison at the station conducting a annual inspection for us for some of the new guys. Annual inspection is probably, other than having to deal with fiscal court, one of my more.
They did some.
They check, they have a list as they go by. It's about twelve, fourteen pages long. It starts with the vehicles mechanically, the belts, the tire treads, how deep is tire tread, all working lights, every item we carry in the annual.
It's really a good thing, really, though.
Yeah, yeah. It keeps everybody playing right.
The wheel is, yeah.
Every item we carry dated, if it's dated, you toss it, you put in new. If the equipment's got a malfunction, then that's a bad taboo. So all the things about the vehicles. And once the vehicles are done, somewhere around one or two o'clock this afternoon, then we go into the office and start looking at paperwork. Look at everything from employee files to run forms to work-related injuries, anything that has to do with the department, the inspector will go through and make sure it's done properly. So it's, it's an exhausting day for us, but we've been so far real good in the past by not having any deficiency and would hope that, that holds true today.
Is the schedule in there?
It's in my.
Is the schedule in there or do they just show up?
Oh, no, it's scheduled. Now, they'll, they'll do it random. They'll be, they can be at UofA Hospital, Inspector Panzer. I want to see your defibrillator pads. And the crew will have to show them and they'd be in date.
Does the state, the state does that? Once a year?
Annual inspection and spot checking. We've never had a spot check, but some other services have. Just where an inspector will be at a hospital or a facility, say, I need to see so-and-so and bring him down here, let me take a look at it.
Would you get, you going to have like a follow-up report on that or?
If we have, if we have an efficiency, we'll have a lot of.
So no news, it's good news.
Right, right. He'll give us a.
Ever since I've been judge, it's been all good reports.
I see.
Yeah, I went out there and looked down. They got a good little facility out there.
Also a report that we placed the order for the heart monitor defibrillators last week. They have a delivery date of somewhere toward the end of July, first of August, before they would come in. And we are sending our supervisors to a leadership conference this Thursday in Frankfurt that's also hosted by Detective Board of EMS. So they'll spend the day there getting some well-deserved training. That being my report.
Okay, recreation report, Bryce?
Rex soccer had their tournament this weekend, so they are finishing to fall. They're show playing elite soccer. Baseball's doing full swing and Bethlehem will be hosting the district tournament. So it'll be packed house all week out there.
Good. Do you have a report?
Today we have one hundred and nineteen inmates. Fifty-nine are state, sixty are county. Currently waiting for circuit corps is thirty-two. Currently waiting for district corps is twenty-eight. We have a hundred and one males and eighteen females. And we've got the Parker Correction doing a training and staff analysis for us. And also more, thank the task force. They gave us a three thousand dollar TV. We got rid of grease board, we got everything electronic on the mains.
Any questions, guys? Move on then to the, actually, Ron just got a budget amendment he wants to talk about. Right?
Yes, I believe I put a copy in your mailbox.
One page, looks like so.
This is just to amend.
Is it in the mailbox?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, you want to explain a little bit?
It's just to.
Except for the new guys.
I talked to Eric already, but it's just to amend the budget for the current year. Anytime we had new money that we didn't original in budget, that we intend to spend, we have to do a budget amendment. And I've got three of those items this year. One in the road fund, one in the jail, and then the Salt River line for the Stephen Foster project, so.
And then once you put them in there, then we're, so we're spending, then you got to show the.
And then I have to allocate the expenses. Most of them are going to the reserve account. I've got a couple that, where they're actually getting allocated to their respective accounts for road projects or the generator at the jail. And then the, the bond money for Stephen Foster obviously come on to the general fund for those expenses that we paid for.
Anybody have any questions? The approval for first reading and advertising for second. Any motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Keith, second by Deb. All approved, say aye. Disapprove, motion will carry. I'm going to sign this for. There, okay. And let's see, what else we have before we go to the budget. Northeast Nelson Fire Protection Budget. They present their budget that's coming here. There's anybody here representing the fire department? If this just goes, and we don't approve this, this goes in matter of record. If you can make sure that that gets, you've got a copy of that, goes in the minutes, please, that they have presented it to the fiscal court. Here you have this one. I'll get a copy of that back later. Let's see. Okay, Stephen Foster Story Drama Association. I did a tabulation sheet, or had Ron take care of it for me, showing the expenses to date on the project and the revenue. You go down to the bottom. Bottom line is that Stephen Foster Drama has, has made payments, reimbursements to us at two fifty-three, three twenty-seven. Kentucky Tourism Grant was one twenty-five. Salt River loan was three hundred and thirty. So the outstanding owed to fiscal court is one seventy-seven, three eighty-three. We're getting ready to, to ask the state to give us the one hundred and twenty-five thousand back. That'll be probably around the first of July. And then the drama has some money in there, still their capital campaign. We're going to ask them to go ahead and give us a hundred thousand of that. So by, hopefully by the end of July, we'll make completely whole, just cash flow. Then we'll be pos, in a positive way, you start paying on the three hundred and thirty thousand. Follow what I'm saying?
No, the three thirty will come out of what the three and four-year people have promised.
The second, third, and fourth year.
How long do we have?
We're just, we're ready to go into our second year of pledges.
How long do we have to pay Salt River back?
Ten years.
Ten years?
Zero percent interest. So we've got some time. And there were some questions. I want to make sure everybody got enough to date due of it. It's all a matter. Most of our grants we receive from the state are reimbursable grants anyway. So it's just a common practice that we have to spend money to get money back. Anybody have any questions?
How close to completion of it?
The project is done with the exception of landscaping.
The flooring, is it?
And the flooring is in. It was, the guy considered having been done or. Uh, the flooring is in, it was, the guy considered having been done or.
It's halfway finished, all the way installed, but they're working.
When you're talking about the flooring, flooring after where they dance, you know, they put a rubber floor down.
Yeah.
Correct, so the flooring came in last week and they're gonna install it.
Is it in sections or how's it?
It looks like felt paper.
Like felt paper.
For a black.
It doesn't want to look like that side of it.
Uh, blues.
Look, kinda like a root thing.
Yeah. So, gotta do that, finish the landscaping, and then, guys, there's always something to do.
Right.
You know, welcome to policing in Old Pacific.
How close is VCD or they done?
They're after them, they're done.
They meant to.
They did that.
Yeah, they did, excellent job.
And they did that.
We got a pod to comment from here from Bethel.
Good.
Yeah, Bethel's used it, uh, there'll be another function this week.
Was that the, the gymnastic group?
Dance pros.
Dance pros, yeah.
Uh, I think it's made next Wednesday.
Never seen it before.
Um, I know they welcome you guys, they'd love to see you over tonight. It'd be really cool to see you.
Hope it don't rain this year, I'll get the last.
Amen.
Well, I know you engineers have definitely worked on this too, so thank y'all for your support.
Oh, yeah, we had a lot of support from others as well, uh, out in the community, so.
Yeah. Team. Yeah, but Jim Lamola, let's use Jim as example, and Jeff, Jeff Mills.
And Sharp.
Are you, wouldn't be involved?
Jeff and Jim.
They did a lot of.
Uh, tons of.
Okay, so, so let me tell you a little something, kinda, kinda funny or whatever, that, uh, Jim, you know, this project from, from the start, it needs somebody that's, uh, can get things done, and I, I won't use the terms I use in front of, of members of the court today, but, uh, Jim has a, a reputation for getting things done, and, uh, and we paid him, uh, some money to, to draw plans and do different things and so forth, and, uh, and then all of a sudden, he quit billing us for his work, and, uh, and I said, Jim, you haven't, uh, turned any bills in for your hourly rate that you, we agreed to, he said, well, you're the only guy I know that gives me work for nothing. So, he quit, he started donating this time from that point on. So, it's been a great project, Jeff Mills the same way.
Yes.
Jeff with, uh, with the city, he did a great job. Um, a letter, I've sent a letter to the media, you guys got a copy in your mailbox, in regards to the window restoration of the old courthouse here, there was a statement by, uh, uh, the city historical coordinator, Richay, that the county was exempt and we are exempt to a point, but we did follow the Kentucky Heritage Council rules and regulations, John did a good job of making sure we secured, uh, the approval process, so we went through the process on the, especially the complete renovation on the first four windows that were taken out and, and re, restored, uh, historically, and now the upper windows were, uh, we did do some replacement windows there, but we got permission from the historical council, I was, historical, uh, Heritage Council.
Heritage Council.
Heritage Council. So, we got permission from them, I just want to clarify to the court, if you guys had heard something about that, I understand Facebook was lighting up and, and talking about the county not, uh, following the rules and regulations of the rules and regulations of the, of the, of the order, but John did a good job of making sure we got those, uh, that should've been in your box last week, don't think that or not, so, I did want to clarify that.
So, we weren't governed locally, we were governed out of Frank.
Out of Frank, yeah, because of the, there were some federal grants, uh, received when we renovated this building, what, in two thousand and four, I think it was, we moved over here to two thousand and five, four or five. I'm gonna get that off my chest. Thank you, for listeners. We do make mistakes, let me just say that, we're not perfect. Now, let's talk a little bit about the budget. Uh, the first item in regards to the budget is what we call, and for the new magistrates to, uh, go over this, would be the annual standing order relating to the payment of routine bills. There's a piece of paper that looks like this. And what that is, is, that is a, a standing order that you, in, in the budgeting process, the, the, not auditors, but the Department of Public Government, uh, wants us to list, uh, a certain amount of, of basic bills that we're required to pay, like the ambulance, uh, lease that we have in New Haven and Bloomfield, et cetera. So, make a long story short, uh, I would ask court to, uh, approve this prepaid, uh, routine bill this.
Motion.
Motion by Bernard Ice?
Second.
Second by Jeff Lear. Further discussion, to those new guys. All approve, say aye.
I have a question.
Yeah, yes.
Arnold Carver on the tower on one sixty-two, is it still in operation?
Road department.
Road department only.
Okay.
I thought when Luke, the big tire, that was supposed to take EMS off of that?
EMS is off of that, the only thing left on his tire is the road department, and that's discussion for the future, there's room on Salt River, but.
Then we try to keep that clear, you know, keep it separated?
It was.
I think that's why we chose to take it.
But that's the only thing out there.
Is that monthly or?
Monthly.
Monthly.
And all the ones that are listed are monthly.
All these are monthly. Well, how can we, I thought when we built that tire, it was supposed to relieve us from renting.
Well, I did for emergency service, we moved everything off of it, and it also unleashed the fiber cost, remember we were paying up that three hundred dollars a month for fiber to the next few years.
Right, right.
I moved right out of there, the road department repeater is on radio control, so there's no hard wire or fiber cost.
It's something we can think of, guys, in the future, you know, I would, I'd do a full, a real thorough investigation, I'll make sure it's, wouldn't mess up what we're doing with emergency management. Okay, motion's been made, second, all approve, say aye. Disapprove, motion carry. We can always guarantee, if you guys want to take that off, we can take that off the list with it. These are all working documents that are always amendable. Um, let's see, I, I made you a, a one-page sheet, uh, you asked of me at the last court meeting, when we reviewed the budget, to find room in the budget for a, an ambulance, if you remember?
Yes.
And, and, and I strongly recommend, uh, when I go over this, that, that, uh, that we not do anything with an ambulance till, uh, after in the January, February area as far as evaluation, but we did buy an ambulance, uh, in two thousand and eighteen, we just, we all lose track of time, especially me. Uh, now, you saw where I reduced, uh, some, some line items in the budget, they're self-explanatory, I'm not gonna go over every individual one of them unless you want me to, and so we had additional hundred and thirty thousand dollars from the general fund to the ambulance fund to pay for the new ambulance, and then the road fund, we just took the, because the salt bids came in where they were, I took the twenty thousand dollars out of the snow removal and put it in reserves, it, tip for tat. Uh, those were the only changes I made in the budget that I, that I presented to you originally. Anybody have any questions?
How long does it take to get an ambulance? If we buy a demo like we have the last three or four times, it don't take very long, is it, Bryce?
No. Uh, at the point in time where we get there, then the court, I'll recommend to the court what's the best option to look at.
You'll go out and search it?
And then the court can tell me, yes, they want to do it that way, or we want to buy a new, or whatever.
Well, we've done pretty good off the demo examples, I mean, the one.
In the past, we've done real well.
Demo, they're really easy stuff, the used ones, what we, we, that's kinda, that market's kinda dried up now.
Yeah.
The used ones.
Then we have an option.
There's a million out there, let me tell you.
Somebody want to think about remounting one of our boxes that was on the older stuff.
That basically comes to the trouble. With remount, about sixty, seventy percent of, of whatever.
Do you anticipate during this audit you're having, they're gonna pull any off the road?
No, we, we, head game on that, we already pulled.
We're gonna.
We, we sent those to no location.
Have we?
Did you pull?
The, the four-wheel drive that we pulled off this year.
Which we have a new four-wheel, well, we replaced it with a couple of years ago.
Judge, what was your, uh, adjustment to, uh, revenue, general fund revenue?
Okay, um, um, I should've marked those, let's see if I've marked my copy.
Percentage wise?
Oh, it was mine.
It's very, but we've had a little bit of revenue more coming in since we did the original budget on, uh, real estate taxes and, uh, little bank deposits, so, um, we had that revenue for this year, and then that increased our revenue projection for next year.
Bank deposit was about ten thousand, eight thousand, something like that, they were small, I'm gonna talk about it, minded, very minded, revenue increase from when the original presentation.
About three percent of the budget.
Uh, I think what else was it, um, the distilled spirits tax, was to get, get that to say, we've got about a fifty thousand dollar cushion there that we didn't touch for safety reasons. Uh, there were just two or three items, I mean, very small items.
Was there any kind of consideration given to the increases and assessments that were recently passed, that was factored into the risk, yes or no?
Yeah, I, I budgeted an increase of two to three percent on what we received this year on real estate taxes, and I base that on assessments and new property.
New, new property is more important.
Two to three.
Two percent actually is what it was.
Two percent, I think.
I left my calculator at home, might have to do some math.
No, two, two, two percent is what, what, and if you go to your assumption page.
Yes.
And I think that's what we used, yeah, probably that. Okay, so, we, we've been averaging two percent a year for several years, and we're not getting the, we're allowed four percent. My theory on it, uh, Jeff, has been the reassessment, that does not help fiscal court.
It does not?
It does not help fiscal court. We're capped at four percent increase in revenue, not four percent increase in rate, but four percent increase in revenue, and, and the, the reassessments, and, and I can tell you, Barbara's been inundated with complaints.
Sure.
But it really doesn't help us, because we've had nice steady growth without that. But she's required by state law to do those, and, and so it could actually cause us to have to lower our rate again, then lower.
I bet it does.
And then lower our personal property again.
It was pretty significant, wasn't it, the reassessment?
Yeah, if you're twenty percent, some of the stuff that I'm hearing, I don't know if, I'm sure you're getting blown up too.
Yeah, I've seen, I've heard some fifty and sixty percent increases.
I had to.
Because they skipped that, uh, two thousand, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, fourteen, that, about five or six years earlier, they skipped reassessment. So, it would've been incremental stages. I thought they were doing, I mean, sincerely, I think they thought because of the depression in the housing industry and the foreclosures, uh, if you can ask Barbara to get the full details, but I think she was at court here, uh, about a year or so ago.
Yeah, I had her, when it happened to me.
Yeah, and, and she talked about they skipped it purposely, trying to help people, in essence, they did for a short period of time, but it's catching up with you now.
Yeah, it was kind of a bad thing, because they went seven, eight years without it, and then all of a sudden, you get hit with it, you know?
Had good intentions.
Yeah, it's kinda like renting, you need to raise it just a little bit instead of doubling it.
Mm-hmm, I'm glad you said that.
Yeah, it's a.
I got that in tape there.
I brought her.
On me that later on.
Yeah, I brought her to court, you know, to tell everybody that fiscal court has nothing to do with her. She's her own private person, and she works for the state, but what gets me about this thing is, you know, she told me, I called her up on, oh, everything's selling so high, Keith, it's gonna be, you know, super assessed, you know? What happens next year if we do go back into recession, will, will they?
You can go back, you can go and appeal.
Just one person can go, or will they?
She got a list, there, there, there'll be days, maybe.
And she told me that consists of one builder here in Nelson County, and one realtor from E-Town, and just a common person?
Yeah, in fact, yeah.
I mean, that you go and appeal to the state.
Oh, no, it's a, it's a, a four-member, five-member board, we appoint a couple, city appoints a couple of them, can't remember exactly, four or five?
Thought she told me one was a builder, one was a realtor, and then.
You gotta have certain industries, uh, by statute, but they're usually pretty common sense, I think they've done a good job over the years. Put down, have as many, they're gonna have a, they're gonna, and we have to pay them a hundred dollars a day, just keep that in mind too, for, per, per person.
Quite the hundred dollars will earn.
It will be this year. It will be, the, the last few years, they've met less than ours. Uh, any further questions, Jeff?
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, I think you're right.
You're good?
I think you're right with the assessment, so, you won't, you won't hear me say that very often.
All good? That they're not gonna help it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, the assumption of, uh, two, three percent increase is probably pretty good.
And if we were to take the four percent increase, which we're allowed, we're allowed to do that, and, uh, might just keep all that in mind.
The growth has kept us from the.
The growth, the growth in the liquor industry has helped a lot. And we've gone, uh, uh, we're a hundred and fifty thousand over budget this year in, uh, in the real estate tax on the, on the spirits. Intend a motion to approve on the first reading, advertise for a second of the, the budget being presented today?
I make a motion for the first budget to be presented.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Jeff Lear, is there a second? Second by Gary Coulter, further discussion.
Uh, just an idea to kinda maybe, I don't know if it's feasible or, or not, with like the ambulance kinda hitting us right there at the end, needing an ambulance, if it would be feasible to get a change-out schedule like the sheriff's department does for the EMS to where it don't sneak up on you, you have to pull revenue somewhere else, maybe budget, what, what did you say you could maybe get a demo for compared to the new price?
We're around a hundred thousand for a demo now, you know, or a rebate, you know, if you get a take that. A hundred and thirty, if we wanted to bid out a new truck, start to finish, like we did last time, uh, if we stay with the gas, and you would might be in the neighborhood of a hundred and thirty, uh, if it's diesel, it's in the neighborhood of a hundred and sixty.
Right, but you could probably get a good diesel for a hundred.
Right.
Demo?
Yeah.
Depending on the time and.
The time is important, all that.
How many people?
Now, there are some, uh, municipalities, when a vehicle gets X miles on, they trail it, those are taxi districts, usually, separate taxi districts, they're up in northern Kentucky, mostly Campbell County, Boone County, and Kenton County, uh, the population's a hundred and fifty thousand people or better, and, and they, uh, they swap them out every hundred thousand miles or, it got a plateau, I don't know where it is, but we're not in a position to do that, and, and because you may have some vehicles that we have that have three, two hundred and fifty thousand miles on, and it's still in great shape. I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just, you know, I'm saying where we have to pull money at, at, you know?
But we also bought an ambulance we've been realizing two thousand and eighteen too, so, about a year and four months ago.
Yeah, it just, it, it kinda snuck up.
You don't have to worry, they'll, they'll let you know.
Yeah, you can just look at the malice chart, it's pretty much.
Normally, Eric, um, in the past, if you look at history, we're replacing a vehicle about every three years.
Every three years.
That's what I mean, so if you, if you schedule one every three years, I mean, if you didn't wait till, well, I mean, the ambulances that I got the opportunity to look at, they weren't, they looked like they was in good shape, but you know.
They used to be good shape.
Yeah, they looked good, I mean, you know, it was, they, but.
He and Don.
The one, the one you looked at, had three hundred thousand plus.
Right, right, and we just put, what, seventeen thousand, so you stuck with that one.
That was a bad one, that was a, you get those.
Right.
We've had those in the sheriff's vehicles too.
I'm just trying, what you're saying is, get in front of that eight mile.
We've had a limit or two in the sheriff's. Before you came.
Uh, there was a history on the, on the sheriff vehicles. We were buying wrecked vehicles, rebuilds, and it's, we're in a great spot right now with, with our fleet.
And with the five new coming in next year, yeah. But what, what worked on that? We'll get you a list. What, Joe, let's get, I'll get with Ron, and we'll see when we purchase, how often we purchased the last twenty years?
Yeah, we did a review.
That's just where you are. Any, any other questions, concerns on the budget?
I just, uh, I want to thank you and Ron. I know it's been a process, and I was part of it here, and I know you've probably been paying on it for years, you know? This is, uh, what I would call a defensive budget that's, uh, lowering revenue and higher own expenses, and I think we will be pretty much there.
Thank you.
We could sweep better than none.
All approved, say aye. Disapproved, motion will carry. Got that one out of the way, Ron. That's the toughest one we've been to for fifteen years, probably, and we thought the retirement was gonna bother us. It wasn't a retirement this time.
Yeah, you had a lot of challenges this year.
Yeah.
This one does seem like.
And we got, and this is a working document, and it can be amended, but I think there's gonna be some good news as we move forward on some things. We're working on something right now, negotiating some deals with, uh, some of our benefit packages, coming up some ideas. Uh, anybody else have any?
Start on next year, I remember.
I said, notice I said that after I got approval, after I got approval. Anybody else have anything, present to court?
I want to thank, uh, Keith Mac, after joining the Citizens Academy, started last night. We got about twenty-one people, and, uh, it's gonna be an eye-opener.
Promise me you won't give him a revolver.
One bullet.
One bullet.
It's all. Thank you, Raymond. It was very educational. I'm telling you, uh, there was stuff that I didn't have a clue, and my wife also is with me. And we got home last night about nine thirty, and all the way home from Barstown, it was that education. Thank y'all for putting it on.
Throw your wife in there.
Uh, motion to adjourn? Bernard Ice, your second?
Eric.
Michael Spence? We can stay here all day if you want to.
I'll tell you a little.
Second, but. All approved, say aye. Disapproved?
Motion will carry.
If you got any motion in, you can put it out there.